Our view and when it gets started, we will have a word of prayer by Councilor Edman, if you don't mind.
Heavenly Father, we're thankful for the opportunity we have to meet tonight. We ask that Thou art blessed as we may be able to make smart decisions and be able to get along more with another, we'll be able to bring things forward that will be able to be of benefit for the town. We ask Thou art guide and direct us in things we say and do, and this we ask only in the name of our Son Jesus Christ. Amen.
It is just a little bit before 5 o'clock, but we are going to start our Council and Town Council meeting this 12th of April 2016. And we welcome the media, Corey McAlcy for Channel 32 and Kim Peabody for Temple Star. Thank you so much for being here. We will call the meeting to order, and the first thing we need to do is look at the agenda. Are there any additions?
Wanting to adopt the agenda as presented.
So, Councilor Bart first move to adopt the agenda, all in favor? Thank you very much. We have some delegation today, in fact, we have one. Doug Saunders will operate, will address us now. The first delegation, Zane Semin, could not come for personal reasons, but will have a meeting rescheduled. So Doug, if you'd like to come, thank you.
Okay, I was asked to, Tim is being, talk a little bit about pool schedule and revenues. We'll go with the schedule first. We have a schedule made up for this season from May to August. And last year, there was a little bit of confusion revolving around the schedule, and so we wanted to clarify what we're doing this year and any little things that are different. I assume you all have a copy of this?
Yeah.
Okay, so, May is typically a shorter month. We're planning aiming for April or May long weekend to open. And we'll see how everything goes with getting the slide up and running and whether that'll happen or not. If it doesn't, we're, we'll be ready to open June 1st. But May typically is a little bit different because students are still in school, so we don't have a lot of public swim time during the month of May. Typically that last week, week and a half of May. So in May, there would be 26 hours of public swim per week, which would be that last week. June is when swim club starts, and so they take up quite a bit of time after school. And public swim, we would have 18 hours per week in June. And then July and August are busiest months. We have 32 hours a week of public swim time. We've added in a family swim on Monday evenings from 6 to 8, something that had happened in the past and was popular with families to come down together and swim. For parents, or lane swims for adults, and then parents and tots at the same time. So overall, the, the public seems pretty pleased with, with the program that we have at present, so we're going to go with the same type of program this year. The only concern that may come up was the same one that came up last year, the rental slash public. So, it does work if the public understands what that means. And basically, it's if we have a rental, there is no public swim. If there is no rental, then there's public swim. People need to get in the habit of, I guess, phoning down to the pool and finding out, and we, we will try and advertise. But we don't really have that listed on this schedule like that. There may be the odd time where that might happen, but we have lots of rental time now, Friday night, and Saturday morning, and Saturday evening. So it'll be laid out exactly like this in the, in the patrons' schedule that we would hand out to them. So I don't think there will be any misunderstandings this year.
Doug, can I ask you, you say you will advertise the rental versus public swim.
Yeah.
Is it possible to use a website?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Because that probably is a place where people would go first, I would imagine, if they're new.
Yeah. Yeah, this is a matter of getting people used to going to the website or phone. You know, Shem added a phone link on our Facebook page for the pool.
Okay, that's good.
Which will help as well, because we have a big following on our Facebook page, and so they're, they keep up on all that.
I was just going to say, we had quite a discussion last week on Parks and Rec about the, the schedule, and, and we felt that, you know, that the communication factor has to be more the responsibility to the user, that we post the times for the things and they can't just assume anything. Their responsibility is to phone and ask the pool, is there rental going on tonight or is there public swim? They can't just show up during that rental time slash public swim and assume that it's public swim. They need to call ahead. That's why our discussion came down to, we, it just needs to stay as is, but we just need to educate the people, put it online.
Yeah.
Get that information on Facebook, on the webs, on the webpage, and even on the, Corey's channel, 32 there, people need to be responsible to find out themselves if they don't know, call.
Yeah.
My, my only concern is, is the key factor there is that if people understand what that public swim slash rental means, because that's where I think really the confusion came from last year, was that people didn't understand what that meant.
Yeah, exactly. And this year, we, in our brochure that we hand out, our little booklet, we will spill it out line by line, exactly what it is and that they need to call.
Well, on your schedule here, it says rentals anyway.
Yeah.
You might make a little claim, disclaimer there that if there's no rental, there could be public swim.
So we can change that and put rentals slash public.
No, actually, I like that better.
This way?
Oh yeah.
Yeah.
Councilor Bantry, you want to do?
Yes. Doug, we noticed that the school usage is 116.5 hours between September and June, you know, the month of June and September. What do we charge the school for that?
Well, we had the, the rates were approved, and we approved them at this council table.
Okay, and I can recall that, so.
Yeah, we, we have the rates.
Yeah, the, the school, we have an agreement with them for only 40 bucks an hour, 40 dollars an hour. But we do get some perks from the school as well. Last year, we found out that they have the first aid dummies that we use in our Bronx Cross Course, so we'll be borrowing those from them. So we're working together to accommodate.
And if you recall the conversation we had at this table, was that some other town nearby do not charge anything for schools rent. So therefore, we kept our fees, but we need to operate the, the place also, and we can't always operate at a loss.
Okay. Any other questions about the schedule or?
Now, I appreciate the way you laid it out, I appreciate the way you presented it. It is really good to hear that there is a certain amount of hours per week for public swim. I think that's an important factor.
Yeah.
And I appreciate the fact that you have many programs that start quite early in the morning, but quite late at night, so you have a variety of your program you're offering for different age group. So thank you so much, appreciate that.
Question, is, is it possible we can discuss the, this hiring policy on the lifeguard at the same time?
Yes, that's coming, that's coming next.
Okay, good.
All right. So just a second before we finish, we move on to that, the Councilor.
Yeah, Doug, I just wonder what, what the policy is on, you know, like, sometimes under certain weather conditions, you have to, you have to close it. What, what, what is the criteria that we have?
So any, any lightning strikes or thunder, 20 minutes after the last strike of lightning or, or sound of thunder, we'll reopen the pool. That's been in place for a number of years.
Oh, yes it has.
All right. So Doug, I know that you are in the process of hiring some lifeguards.
Yeah.
And we have, yes?
There was also a small revenue piece I wanted Doug to work on.
Oh, okay, so sorry.
Do you want to do that first?
Last year, there was some discussion about, when people were upset about the rentals, there was some discussion of what, what revenues do rentals bring in? How significant are they? If they're insignificant, should we not allocate so much time?
Right.
So I just asked Doug to put those numbers together as well.
Thank you, Doug, appreciate that.
So, last year, there was a total of 7,306.90 in rentals, and it's broken down into different categories, you know, 1 to 30 people, 31 to 75, 76 to 150. And, and so, yeah, it came out $7,306 just in rentals. And so we thought last year, well, it was my first year there, but I thought that was pretty impressive that we brought in that much money in rentals.
It's significant.
Yeah, and I think this year, with the slide going in, we're going to see a lot more activity with rentals, and, and it's going to be a busier pool.
Let's hope for good weather.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilor Bantry, Councilor Tree.
With the slides going in, Doug, what's the capacity of your pool?
It still remains the same, 170, 175.
175.
Because the water circulates from the slide through the pool, so it's the same water. So we can still only have 175 people in the pool, because it takes three hours for it to totally cycle that amount of water through the public filters.
And what can you, what can you have in the, in closed area? How many people?
In the, 170 maximum for that facility.
In the pool?
In the pool.
Oh, in the enclosed area.
In the pool or slide or whatever.
Enclosed.
It's per, it, it depends on the amount of water in your pool and how fast your water circulates to clean. So our pool is 175 people, maximum, per hour.
I mean, the question is as follows, too. Since we have an area that really is like a picnic area, more or less, and those people come there but just to see one or two child, two children swimming, but they are not, so hope?
Yeah, we can help people if they say, if they say they're not going to swim, and they're just going to go sit on a blanket and watch their kids, that's fine, we can have, we can have more people in there.
So you don't count them as part of the 175.
No, we only count swims.
Yes, that's what I saw.
Yeah.
Yes. Councilor Tree.
Doug, just curious, you know, you presented some, some figures for, for the rentals from, from last year, and generally, it looks like it's $70 an hour, but there's a few anomalies that are different. I just wonder what, you know, what the reasons are for, for different rental fees, you know, if you could explain what the anomalies are.
Okay, point, okay, anomaly.
Well, okay, well, May 28, one hour is $55.
Oh, okay, okay.
There's a few here and there.
Okay.
There's a few here that are, that are either higher or lower.
Yeah, okay, I can explain that.
There's a few.
So, if you look down that sheet, swimming pool rental revenue, there's $70 an hour, which was our base fee for 1 to 30 people. Once that goes over 30 people, we have to bring in an extra lifeguard, so prices go up. And some of these, like the 140, would be for two hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, the hours are there listed down that column. And then there's a couple where people had coupons, like we gave out certificates for a family, and, and they won it through some organization that was, it was donated to. So it all depended on the number of people and how many guards were on duty.
Okay.
That's why there's differences in amounts.
So if there's a, less, less people, you can charge a little less, too, is that?
There's 0 to 30, in our old schedule, was $70.
Oh, okay.
31 to 75 was $85.
And that's gone up this year, though, hasn't it?
Yeah.
What are those figures this year?
But we have, Councilor, Doug doesn't have the sheet right now.
I, I have it all up here, though.
You have it here? Okay, all right, we're not putting you on this, but except that we discussed all those rates on the table already in the past, so.
Okay, so, any rental this year, $150 an hour. And, and of course, you all know that we based our, our fees on Sterling's pool.
Yeah.
We took, we look at all the pools in the area, Raymond, McGrath, Sterling, Pincher Creek, and we went actually with the lowest, which was Sterling. So we're, we're kind of more in line with the rest of the pools in the area.
So that's up to 175 people?
Exactly.
Whatever.
Yeah.
Happens to be, whether it's 30, or whether it's 50, or whatever, it's still that price.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Now let's go to the next item, if Councilor is satisfied?
Yep.
On this item? Thank you. So, if Councilor, you go to 7, 7I, request for decision hiring our sibling lifeguard. As you know, we have a policy in place that does not allow for, for children of staff employees to be hired. And in the case of lifeguards, it's not so easy to find good lifeguards and willing lifeguards for the schedule that is given to them. Therefore, we have, in the past two years, made some exceptions for some siblings and also children of staff that we have at the town. And there are two names, there is a young lady called Kathleen Pearson, and the other one, Darby Jasperson. And what we need to do is to approve those names to be lifeguards to allow for Doug to have them on the roster.
I'll make a motion that Ms. Recreation Department, along with Mr. Saunders, proceeds to hire those siblings with their qualifications.
Okay, Kathleen Pearson and Darby Jasperson.
Yeah, it's, it's not actually, it's not Caitlin. It's Ashlyn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Your sister.
Got, got the wrong name, so she's a sister of Kathleen.
Yeah.
Okay, there we go, sorry. Thank you, I stand corrected. All right. All in favor? Thank you. Kurt, you have your lifeguards.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And thank you for, for all your information. Sorry if we put you on this.
No, that's fine, thank you.
All right.
Mayor, I'm just going to be talking to Josh. So we'll be right back.
All right, you know what we can do? We can look at the minutes. We can do five, the adoption of the minutes of March 22nd, 2016. Councilor Bart first?
I'll move to adopt the minutes of March 22nd, 2016.
Thank you. Any question regarding the content? No? So, all in favor? Thank you so much.
Mayor?
Yes?
Because we're not going to have our RCB quarterly report.
Do you want, we look at the report?
I, I think, I think we need to look at that report.
All right. So if you look at the report, I just got some information that I had asked Jeff to look into for me. As you can see, the numbers seem quite high at this time when it comes to personal, persons' offenses and property offenses. Now here's what happened in that quarter. As you know, there has been, for persons' offenses, a scam going on through town where people were phoned for the Revenue Canada, and every time a person called, it was logged as a persons' offense. So I was one of those numbers.
I was, too.
Well, there you go. As for property offenses, here is what the issue was. There was a break-in at the post office, and many, many boxes had been vandalized. Every box that was vandalized corresponded to one of the offenses.
That was one of those numbers, huh?
Yeah. So right away, when you start to look at that, and I will suddenly take, for the persons' offense, what was the number that Zane said were about?
A couple dozen, 20?
20 or so.
20 or so.
And for the property offense?
About the same, almost 30, I think.
We were about the same. So you start to take that out, you can see with that.
Put out that bad then.
So I felt reassured a little bit. As for the rest, is the numbers are quite?
Critical code is, is basically?
They're quite comparable, yeah. And we will meet, we will meet with Zane regardless of this. So, thank you for asking that, so that's, this was. If you look on the, maybe let's do 6B, awaiting for?
It'll be just two minutes, Mayor.
All right, so maybe we can do 6B.
Yep.
If you look at Air Policy O-2 Offsite Levy Policy, if you remember, we made a recommendation at CCW to rescind that policy. So I'd need somebody to make that motion. Councilor?
Okay, I, I will move that we rescind Policy O-2 Offsite Levy Policy.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. And by the same token, if you remember Policy P45-1, Private Land Development Policy, we had to amend it slightly, and so the amendment is now appearing on your policy. Yes, Councilor Bantry?
I'll move that we accept Policy P45-1 in the Private Land Development Policy from the CCW.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Can I take one second here?
Please go ahead.
One thing, just while we're waiting, I wanted to point out, while you're looking at P45-1, we changed the formatting of the policy. I actually wanted to get just a little feedback. Shem's been working on this, so that when you look at this in the binder now, it talks about who prepared it, what does it supersede. We do a policy statement now at the beginning to give some preamble as to the reason we want to almost explain what the problem is and why this is a solution to the problem in each policy statement. So we, we, this is the beta version, we, this is our first one that Shem did this on. I just wondered if there was any feedback on the format.
In fact, I can give you some feedback. I very much appreciated that, because as I read it, I thought, well, I come to understand what that is all about and why we're doing what we're doing. I liked it very much.
Good. I feel like this addresses the issue that we've had with the whereas statements, even with bylaws.
Right, which was always an issue for us.
So I, I think this is great. Yeah, we had some of that conversation, and we're calling the capitalization policy. Councilor Peabody, at the time, you pointed out that if we, if we draft this new policy, it really doesn't give a lot of the history of the old one.
Right.
In this case, it would show that this is superseding.
Yes.
This old capitalization policy, and you kind of have that historic reference?
Yeah.
As you go through, so, kudos to Shem, he's been working on this, and you'll also see the bylaw in 6A, when we get to that, is also in a different format.
And that's another, another thing that we will come at, and appreciate the way we're doing it. It creates transparency and allows us as council to do a better job, because now we understand what we're doing.
Good, and feel free, if you're looking that over and saying, man, if it just included this, sir, I don't quite, feel free, we're, we're kind of toying with this formatting right now.
Yeah.
We think we're onto something. We think we're onto a good fix.
Yeah, so, Shem, thank you, kudos to you.
Doug.
For having taken that. Okay.
You can maybe go to 6A if you want.
Let's go to 6A. The bylaw, 1648 Borrowing Bylaw. As you know, this bylaw is needed. Not that we need to borrow money that's going to be repaid by the taxpayer, but it's money that we need as we perform work that will be paid with grant from the government. In order to be able to get that money, we need to do the work, present them the bill, and then once we get the bill, that will repay us. Meanwhile, we need to pay with something. Therefore, the borrowing policy for that specific item. Yes?
I'll move second reading of bylaw, 1648 Borrowing Bylaw.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. And so we need it.
Yeah, good. Before, before we.
Go ahead.
I just want to ask a question, because this, this pursuant to, to some of this money being received, you know, the grant money. I'm just, I'm just was wondering if, if there's any minor amendments that need to be made, or is, is the bylaw insufficient, the way it's, with all of the figures and, that are in it as it stands? Yeah, it is, the province changed the dispersal of this money. We, we had that check upfront, as you remember, we've been sitting on it since last year.
Right.
And now they've decided for the remainder, it'll be on a reimbursement basis, but all the numbers are, are accurate as per the letter from the province in there. I just wanted to check, make sure that was.
Yeah.
Thank you. So is that money that we can use upfront to get started? Yes. Without having to borrow? Yeah, that's right. We can use that money.
The beginning?
Correct. We have $600,000 of the cash, we can start burning up now. Yeah. Before we have to go into the line of credit.
Right. The project, do you remember the extent of the project? What was it?
2.17.
2.2 million?
2.37, sorry.
Okay, no, 2.2, 2.3.
We got the total amount.
So that's what it is. We were given in advance, but once it burned out, you have to complete the work, send them the bill, and they'll reimburse you.
Mayor, the, the bank stabilization that's going on right down there right now, the riprap, that's not done by the town right yet. That's still Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
So just so you know, logistically, that, all that creek work goes to tender this week. I met with Bart this morning, Albert Tejo's prepared the tender documents, he's actually doing an onsite meeting for all interested parties, I believe, next Thursday. So he'll bring any interested contractors out, they'll walk the area, show them where access, ingress and egress and everything will be. So we are proceeding to try and get that creek done before any major water, the bridge, sorry, and then the rest will be in the fall.
Perfect. Another question, Councilor Bantry?
Now, to add to, add to my comments and my question, are we doing anything downstream to protect downstream?
So this project?
Because once we riprap upstream, we create problems downstream.
The energy goes somewhere. Correct. This project will hit four locations all the way through the campground, is as far north as it's going to go. Now, not consistently between the golf course and the campground, it's hitting specific areas. Do I, I believe I agree with you, there will be some impact downstream. I just don't know exactly where that's going to be. That's one of the issues, right? We'll have to see how that presents. The one thing about our creek is the willows start coming into play after the campground. Yeah, it slows down. And so we start to get a lot of willows on each bank, at about Lions Park, all the way through tonight, all the way through to First Avenue, sorry. And so that helps a lot. We see a lot of debris, but we don't see a lot of erosion. So we hope that stays.
All right, so we have.
Yeah, okay, I will move third reading for the, the borrowing bylaw.
Bylaw, 1648.
Yeah, yeah, 1648.
All right, all in favor? Thank you.
Just a question on formatting. I noticed, maybe this is more a question for Shem, but there seems to be a different font used in bylaw versus policy, is that, not, not that I matter, just in our big deal selection, but the policies seem to be a little softer and bylaws seem to be a little harder looking.
Maybe that's.
Yeah, maybe that's.
The bylaw is for us maybe to really hammer it down.
Sending a message.
Maybe, I, I don't know.
All right.
A good point.
Okay. I went, let's go to 7B. Let's start to look on their other business, Highway 3 ladder. There was a little bit of an issue when we had that presentation at the Mayor's Enreeve. At that Mayor Enreeve meeting in November, I think it was, I really was surprised that a ladder was presented that way with the towns that had not been given a chance to offer their input and to look at the requisition and see our ladder. It surprised me. And I really did not feel that it was right, that money would be requisition of a municipality when there is no agreement. when there is no agreement between the organization, which we don't really know how independent they are, but they seem to be, and not under a government mandate. So personally, I do not feel that we are obligated to, to buy by this letter, not accept a requisition. And that's my position. We had the chance to meet with the mayor, three other mayors from Sterling, my brother and women, and their position is the same as ours. So I feel if you agree that we ignore it.
Well, this is after the fact, what they've done to us.
Yes. I understand their need for money, but I also understand there is a process and a governance issue here. All right, so we will, we will not move along with that. Jeff, I do not know that we need to reply to it or just leave it alone. Leave it alone.
Well, let's be, we address probably then the Mayor's Enreeve again.
Well, the way they are doing it right now, the towns that are on that corridor, if they're interested in participating into the financial burden.
We're not on Highway Three.
They do that of their own free will and choice with their council approval. And as for the rest, we're applying outskirts, but you don't have to feel obligated.
Just a comment, remember when, when they twinned the highway Barnwell area? The town didn't get a lot of consultation on that, and they didn't realize that that highway was going to bypass their community, and that really affected their, their business base there. People now don't even, they don't know what Barnwell is. They just drive on by.
Exactly. Okay, thank you, councillor. So let's go to seven E. Would you like to do that, Jeff, please?
Sure.
It has to do with the West Industrial area. We don't need any motion, what we need is to understand the issue.
Yeah, I'd like to talk to councillor tonight and just get some kind of philosophical positions on a couple of things. I started thinking about this West Industrial after we made our, our last sale in that area. And I got concerned about recovering costs for developing the area. So we've been selling that land for about ten thousand dollars an acre, which is historically what unserviced raw land that's bitten the price, which is fine. And I don't begrudge anyone who's purchased land in there. They've purchased it fair and in an open and honest market environment, so good, good for them. But using them as an, as example, as an example, I'll use, I'll use Mr. Schaefer up there. So he bought land a few years ago, and to his credit, he put a great big building on it, which is great and great in the area. And since then, we've developed the road, we've extended water, we've extended sewer, and he's now the beneficiary that he's paid his connection fee and he's done all those things. But there's a great cost to that, that we didn't recover. Obviously, I'm not ever anticipating retroactive recovery here. But going forward, I feel we're maybe shortchanging ourselves on the sale of the land, but there's a balance. If we potentially recover every cost, we might be looking at forty or fifty thousand dollars an acre. And is that at all reasonable? We, we may have no interest ever again at those kind of prices. So I wanted to talk about a couple of things. I asked Nolan to prepare this cost sheet that you have in your background group, and I just wanted to go through a couple of things and then I have some specific questions. What you'll see is Brandon and Nolan looked at water, sewer, road, which is just the internal road system, storm and drainage, which is really just road grading culverts and getting the water, storm water where it needs to go, and electrical. So none of this includes the connection fees at time of connection. We've always addressed those separately, but when you want to connect into the system, there's a fee at the time because maybe they don't need sanitary sewer, for example. So they don't need to pay a connection fee. And the other thing to point out is on the electrical, that doesn't include the transformer on the site because one of the unique things about industrial areas is you may get a wide variety of needs for a transformer. You may have a three-phase user and then you might have a hundred amp user and anywhere in between. So that's separate as well. But when we look at, in the last column with the numbers in it, it says total cost per acre of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars. So that's per acre, we're almost at twenty-five thousand. But there's even a couple of things there that doesn't include. If we look to expand the highway for access as we're working right now, that doesn't include any of those costs, and it doesn't include any offsite levies that might come as well. So potentially, we could be driving the cost per acre upwards of forty thousand, forty-five thousand dollars an acre, which in my mind might be getting a little steep to try and sell any land in this industrial area. For a residential lot, we all jump at paying forty-five thousand dollars for an acre. But most industrial applications need multiple acres. So maybe isn't reasonable that they could only get land on an acre.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have you looked to Ledbridge and compared what their costs are?
No.
What they charge?
Well, I haven't looked, I know Pincher Creek, for example, is, are they fifty thousand an acre? I think they're somewhere in that range, fifty to sixty thousand acre. I mean, forty thousand acre isn't unreasonable, but the question is, is this council may, one of my questions I'll get to here is maybe we want to, for example, subsidize the soft costs. So for example, do we want to subsidize the labor and machine time portion of construction? That, that might be an option. The other thing I would like to see us do and price into these lots is I'd like to make them commissionable, meaning I'd like them to be able to be sold by real estate agents. I've had conversations with real estate agents and say, I have clients coming and asking me about commercial land. I don't show them the West Industrial area because there's no point. I can't get compensated for it. The town doesn't pay real estate commissions. So within, with industrial land, I, I think unless there's a compelling argument, otherwise, I'd like to see us factor in the commission. And my guess is that's going to fall somewhere around a thousand dollars an acre, four to five percent to the price per acre. Councillor Barnes, you could probably speak to that. But I asked some other Realtors, not to drag you into the debate here, between four and five percent on land sales under a hundred thousand dollars, you know, something like that. So I'd like to see if we could get to a point we could factor that into, but that comes with cost. So are those costs we wish to recoup or are those kind of things? So those are a couple of things I just wanted to throw out there for a little bit of debate. If these lots start getting at about fifty thousand an acre, my feeling is, is that we're, we're not going to get some of the purchasers that might be kicking tires on that kind of land. They'll go to the county or they'll go somewhere else. The other thing we need to talk about down the road is there's different ways to levy these costs. So maybe the raw land price is ten thousand an acre potentially, but then if you want water, that connection fee is ten thousand dollars. And if you want sewer, the connection fee is ten thousand dollars. The downfall of that, that I threw out as a for instance, is we still have to run the infrastructure by it. Doesn't change for us to have and put those, that infrastructure to the lot. And there's an inherent additional value in the lot because it goes by. So we increase the value for that owner because that infrastructure goes by, which is fine. There's nothing necessarily wrong with that. So I, I looked at, do we eat the soft costs? Is that how we mitigate? We make sure any materials are covered, we make sure that fuel is covered, you know, those kind of things. But maybe labor is something that you as a councillor say, we're willing to, to eat the labor on the development of the industrial area, or we're willing to eat the margin and machine time.
Jeff, if I recall, it was the former council that had decided that the West Industrial area needed to be developed and we needed to have somehow some connection, we needed to have the utilities, and we were going to put some money every year towards that type of improvement. So I think philosophically, past council was willing to see maybe some, some cost subsidized to have area available. But I agree with you that we can't forever carry on that way. It come a time where we need to recoup some of our money.
Because to potentially develop fully out the whole fifty-five, sixty acres, we're probably talking at least two million dollars.
Right.
Well, at ten thousand an acre, the best we could stand to recoup is five hundred fifty, six hundred thousand dollars.
Right. And so.
That's a huge shortfall.
It's to understand how much burden of the taxation we want to absorb and how.
Yeah. You know, and one of, one of the things that we consider, I mean, just like you do with like urban renewal, you pay a grant, but you recoup it in tax revenue. So I think this is what we would be looking at with the industrial land, and I think that has to be factored in as, as, you know, what kind of taxation are we getting and how many years is it going to take to recoup, you know, the, the revenue, you know, through, through the taxation there.
And utility revenues as well.
And utility revenue, yeah.
I think along with that, I, I think there would be value in saying recouping the hard costs, but subsidizing those soft costs with the idea that that's going to help us to generate more tax revenue down over.
Utility revenue.
Yeah. I think we, we need to decide that as a council. I don't know that we can do that tonight.
Yeah, I, I'm fine to look at some scenarios and from what I'm hearing, to bring back costing structure that says, and we've kind of done that here, but here's our hard cost per acre. And then here's what labor is per acre, and we can look at that. I'm waiting to get some costs on that highway expansion. It's gone to transportation, so we're just waiting to hear if everything's okay there. And then they do what's called a level one costing on it. So we're waiting to hear on that because that's going to add considerable cost to the program development, too.
And one of the other things, too, that we need to take into consideration is, is when we get this, whether we get this AXIA in or the other high-speed internet service that's going to help encourage larger businesses to come to cards because until that comes, you're not going to get many that are going to want that anyways. They're going to need to have that, that high-speed internet. And, and so once we get that in place, if we get that in place, that will help companies to make that decision that they'll come here, they'll pay a little higher price for that land because they've also now got that capability of having the high-speed internet for their service, but also that land's at a lower cost because you take those companies that are going into Ledbridge, Calgary, Medicine Hat, and those bigger places, they're paying quite hefty prices for their industrial land.
But their location is not our location.
I realize that.
At the risk of derailing our argument or our discussion.
Go ahead, I've been derailed before, but I know how to get back on.
I, I've recently been made aware of some options that are available here in town today that anybody in town could get, hundred up and hundred down, as of right now.
Yeah. There is, there is a way we might have another solution.
We just, we just made a motion to adopt the policy P forty-five on private land development. I'd ask the administration to put a policy together for us to view similar to this so that we have the actual figures in front of us and that we can go over, you know, and have a full picture of it.
So the one other thing I wanted to ask, if councillor Barnes brought up, I believe, when we're looking at this costing, we can definitely look at hard costs, soft costs, labor machinery. Would it, do you think it would be beneficial for us to try and have prices that are simply in parity with the region or that are recovering costs? So there's a couple of ways to look at it. We look at it on a cost-based model or we say, hey, Pincher's fifty thousand an acre, so why do we care for fifty thousand acre? Fort MacLeod's forty-five thousand acre, so why don't we be forty-five thousand acre? You know, do we, do we want to go for parity or competitive advantage, low cost?
I would say competitive advantage.
You know, we have the opportunity.
I think we already have the issue not to be in the best corridor for transportation. So if we can offer something else.
We have to take it into consideration, I think. You know, at least look at what, what, what the land is there. And, and you know, if we're going to, if we're going to, you know, undercut it a little bit, I think that's, you know, something we'll have to decide if we want to do.
We, we also got to realize, we are in the trucking corridor here. Trucks are going north and south now, and eventually the Canadian government's going to get online with what's going on in the U.S. side. They're going to have a larger port there and better facility for trucking. And I've heard lots of truckers say that they prefer to go north and south as going, a lot of them just can't stand going over that way over to Coots. So they don't mind coming back and forth here. And so if that ever changes, that'll make our competitive advantage even better.
There is some, some wisdom there, too.
So we got to think forward.
Okay, so I think I'm hearing enough things. That's all I was really looking for tonight is just if you're philosophically very opposed to one way or another, we would steer away. But I'll bring you back some scenarios. We'll make some phone calls to surrounding communities just to see how we would be parity-wise recovering full cost versus subsidized cost.
But I think in general, the head nods were more in favor of that competitive advantage.
Yeah, yeah. We will tread lightly around the Northwest Trade Partnership Agreement and subsidize the lots. I'll deal with that. And we'll just make sure that whatever we do is equitable.
Yes.
So that we don't find ourselves in any one-off subsidy deals. So that's why I want to look at this now. I've had some people kicking tires on that land, and you know, they're saying, well, I'm going to get it for what this guy did. And I'm saying, of course you do, because I've already run water, sewer and road past it, so it's worth triple what you would pay for it. You know, we extended Second Avenue quite a ways down last year, and that opened up about three or four more lots. I'm just not comfortable letting them go for what those previous ones did because we've got a lot of money already socked in there. And I'd like to turn the corner and start heading south and opening up other ones and kind of doing a phased approach. But our rate of recovery isn't going to put a lot of money in the bank to do that.
No, that's very good.
So, okay, we'll come back with a little bit more when I have the road or highway numbers.
And Jeff, thank you so much for looking into it. It's, we need to move forward, but careful. Thank you. How can you hear? And we have our town auditor, Josh Allen. Thank you for being there with us today. Today's a big day. We have our two thousand fifteen audit for our town, and we know they're fairly good news. And so, How can, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Now, I have a couple of financial statements, apparently printed too many, but.
All right.
Okay. I have a new appreciation for the people that do the collating and run printers.
Did they have you do it?
We were, we were scratching our heads trying to figure out how to do it all, so.
But what learning curve, you know?
And a new printer, too, and, yeah, I do. So thanks for, thanks for waiting. I'm just, we just went over these financials with the audit committee just before this meeting and.
And the audit committee was councillor Creed, councillor Barfus and councillor Barnes. So thank you.
Yeah. And so here, I'm just going to give a brief overview of the financial position of the town at year end and just briefly comment on the operations in two thousand and fifteen. So first of all, I guess I'll say that we did have a clean audit report, so that's, that's great. And so on page three, if you look at the numbering at the bottom of the pages, on page three, it's the consolidated statement of financial position. If you look just down at the bottom line there, you'll see accumulated surplus, or that's, you can also think of it as our net assets. So it's all of our assets minus all of our liabilities. And you can see that we increased our asset base in two thousand and fifteen by one point one million dollars. It went from forty-six point eight million to forty-seven point nine million. And there's a lot of moving pieces in these financial statements, but there are a few things that explain the brunt of that increase in our asset base. First of all, at year end, we, and we still are, we were sitting on five hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in unspent DRP funds that we will be using for the Lee Creek rehabilitation project. And that's, that's something that we don't see every year. We also had an increase in our reserves balance. So we budget to reserve new amounts for new things, and we also carry forward unspent budget funds. And so the net increase in our reserves fund was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And then the third thing that I would point out is that our, we had a very aggressive capital project schedule in two thousand fifteen. And so the additions to our capital asset base far outpaced the depreciation of the existing one. So those three factors really explain, those are the three main reasons why our net assets increased by one point one million. And I'll just point out too that, you know, we have, we have certain restricted amounts, meaning, you know, our reserves funds. We have about just shy of two point four million dollars in reserves. And we also sit on some grant money. We have some unspent DRP money, MSI, gas tax funds, and a few other little pieces. And those are restricted, meaning we can't just go and pay our bills with that money. And so what we want to see in the financial statements is that we have sufficient GICs, cash, and investments to cover those restricted amounts. If you take our GICs, which were at one point seven and change million dollars at year end, and our investments portfolio with Woodgundy, which is at two million dollars at year end, we have about three point eight million dollars in investments and GICs compared to about three point four million dollars in reserves and grant money that's restricted. So we have enough and a little bit to spare as far as our cash and investments position is concerned. So just in short, we have a strong financial position. And just a brief comment on the next page, which is the statement of operations. It shows the budget versus the actual results for our operations in two thousand and fifteen. If you took just a quick scan down the budget column and compared that with the two thousand and fifteen actuals, I think you'll see that two thousand and fifteen was a well-managed year. We are very close to at budget or slightly below on almost every line item. And any unspent items, we are carrying forward. And so my comment in the audit committee meeting was that it's better to be a little conservative and then carry things forward than to overspend and then run out of money. So I think I'm a little biased because I'm with administration, but I think it does show that we do try to manage the money well and be conservative. So is there anything else I should comment on for the management letter?
Yeah, we should touch on that a bit, yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Now, when you were saying we'd done well, I mean, the budget un-audited, when we see revenue over expenses, we had figured out one million forty-five. And that really came down to a hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and eighty-four in the middle of the page. So it's quite a big difference. But I mean, of course, in the revenue, we know there are some grant money that was answered. Thank you. You want to talk about?
The management letter?
The management letter. Thank you.
Yeah, so.
So that is for those of us listening, is.
Take a motion on the financial statement now because this is part of it.
Yeah, why don't we take a motion on that? Councillor Barfus, would you like to put the motion forward since I understand you're the one who wants to do it?
Sure. I'll move to approve the financial statements as presented.
Okay. Any questions? Sign off. All in favor? Thank you very much. Well done.
Thank you.
All right. So now the management letter. Can you maybe explain a little bit what a management letter is?
Yeah.
It's a letter to management to improve things essentially.
Yeah, and we appreciate it because really it's sort of, in a way, it's a bit of a byproduct of having the annual audit done. When our auditors, Josh Allen is our auditor this year, and so as he goes through our control processes and just looks over all our books, he finds recommendations that might be helpful to safeguard our assets, to help us become more accurate in our accounting of things. And so this management letter just gives us a couple of findings, audit findings, that will help us do that. And one of the, one of the things that he's recommended is that we improve our controls over inventory receipts. Sometimes we get contributed assets. So in this particular case, we received some electrical meters for free from the city of Lethbridge, which is great for us. But we want to ensure that it's recorded properly. And we, part of, one of the purposes of internal controls is that you kind of owe it to your personnel to have the control because it safeguards their integrity and it safeguards our assets. And so it just, it keeps a straight line, right? And so he's recommended that we do some spot checks on our inventory throughout the year or attach the bill of lading or have like a receipt document as inventory comes in. So that was one of his recommendations. And then the other one deals with how we record our machine and labor time for self-constructed capital assets. So basically when we use our time and our labor and machine time to construct our own capital assets. So we're looking at that now. I gave the example in our audit committee meeting of a loader that we have, we have a rate of a hundred and sixty-eight dollars, but what exactly is our cost for that machine? And so we're going to go through all of our equipment and do a study of, try to figure out as close as possible using conventional calculation methods, what's the cost and what's, and compare that to our rate, and then come up with a more accurate number for our machine time and the cost of building our utility lines and things. So, so we appreciate that from our auditor. And were there any questions on that?
No, I think the recommendation are interesting. It's a little bit of a change from the past and moving into more transparency and accountability. So that fits with what we do on the table. So that's good.
I just wanted to throw it there. When we're looking at to compare what our actual costs are and what we charge, when we look at our shared agreements, where we're maybe working on a project with another person who we have a shared agreement with, like the county, whatever, when we throw in those costs, we throw in that price, we're charging them an X number of dollars for that job, when they're coming back to saying, well, you know, maybe we could offset those rates for each other, we have a little bit of a room there to work with, you know, so that maybe we can charge them the actual cost and they'll charge us the actual cost. And then since we're, rather than anything, we're getting, we're helping each other too.
Well, that's if we both have the same accounting practice.
Yeah, exactly.
It would work. Councillor Banbury?
I really appreciate Hawken and Mr. Allen, the commitments and contingencies, line twenty, twenty-one, where you've outlined our insurance policy, the insurance policy and how that's done on the employee sick leave. That to me is a valuable piece of information right there. And I, I think I'd ask the administration to look to that, that statements.
Okay. All right. Hawken, do you want to go to the two thousand and fifteen reserve listing? We will have to take a motion on that reserve listing. Do you have it at this point?
You all have it in your package.
Yeah.
Did you have it?
I do.
So if you want to maybe go through it, and then we'll take a motion and approve it.
We need a motion on the management.
No, no, that is, that is from management. It's for administration. Go ahead.
Okay. So you see at the, on the top of the first page, there's a summary section.
What page was that again?
This is seven C, background.
So we've categorized our reserves into the different segments of our operations. General Government, Protective and Emergency Services, Public Works and Transportation, Water, Wastewater, Garbage, and on down. And what we want to do is we want to make sure that we are setting aside sufficient reserves for all these different categories that you see across the top of that summary chart. So capital reserves, scheduled non-annual operating expenses. So for example, we know that every other year, we're going to bring in a crusher, and it's going to cost us about eighty grand to crush all of our waste, concrete, and so forth. So it's scheduled, but it's not every year. And then the next column, contingency for unplanned operating expenses. This is your, this is your crap happens column. And then the last column, there's your budget carryover. So unspent funds from, from the previous budget year. So we feel like with those different areas covered in all the different segments of our operations, that provides us with a framework where we can think about all the different things that might happen or that we should be reserving for. So the setup of it is in and of itself a reminder, if you will, of our financial planning. And so you can see that for, for capital replacement, we have a total of one point seven million dollars reserved. And down in the details here, every, every item, you can look through the designated purposes column on the far right there and see what each item is reserved for. And so it's not like we can just go and, without a motion from council, go and spend this money on just anything. It's restricted for particular purposes. And so you can see for capital reserves, we have a total of one point seven million dollars for scheduled, but non-annual operating expenses, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, contingency for unplanned expenses, two hundred and fifty-five thousand, and then budget carryover, a hundred and fifty-two thousand, for a total of just shy of two point four million. So are there any questions on this listing? I guess I wasn't planning on going through like each item, but.
Councillor.
Yeah, so for me, the anomaly that jumps out is the carryover amount for the planning and development section. Is that just things that didn't happen last year but are going to happen this year, basically? Because, I mean, that was the lion's share. And I can kind of see, I mean, the solar study, we haven't paid for yet, but we will type thing. Okay, yeah, well, that's, I just wanted.
The big chunk in there was the infrastructure master plan.
Right.
It was budgeted in two thousand and fifteen, but it wasn't completed. So we haven't forwarded the money. But it's a, was it fifty thousand, Hawken?
It's a, it's a big piece of that pie. Forty, forty-one.
We plan on spending fifty-five, but we've been able to carry forward forty-one.
Yeah.
All right. So if you don't have any questions, what I need is a motion to approve the list of reserves.
One other question, it's not, it's not in the summary at the top. Just explain, you know, on that first account down there, you've got a number of items. And, you know, one of the items is capitalization policy. And I'm just trying to understand, I know we discussed this in council and we decided basically to do away with the capitalization policy. And so I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, why it's still in there or. Oh, is it? Okay, is that what you're saying? If it was in there last year?
We had it for about eleven years.
Yes.
And so there is a balance that's built up from that.
Okay.
But.
And so where, yeah, I guess then where will it be going? I mean, you know, it was there in two thousand and fifteen. So then it'll be disappearing, is that, so where will it go?
We don't make things disappear.
Well, I mean, it's got to go somewhere.
We spend wise things. We can, we can spend, we just don't plan on adding to it in the way that we have in the past.
Okay.
Right now, it's, its designated purpose was always general capital expenses.
Right.
And so if something were to come up of a capital nature, council could pass a motion and approve spending from that fund.
So that'll sort of remain until it's used up or be transferred to other, to other reserve funds?
Yeah.
We may also use it as a funding source in any given budget too. So we would come to council and say, look, we added an extra block of road. We need a couple hundred grand. So we would put it as one of, we would deplete it in a budget. And then you would pass the whole budget by motion. So, yeah, it's going to whittle away until it's, until it's.
Okay, so it's going to still sit in that fund with that name until we use it up?
But we won't be adding to it like we did in two thousand and fifteen.
Right, okay.
Thank you. We had some good conversation. I need a motion.
I'll move to accept the reserves as presented.
The reserve listing for two thousand and fifteen. All in favor? Thank you. It's approved. Thank you very much to Josh, to Josh Allen, our auditor, and to Hawken for having such a clean bill of files to present with no glitches. Totally appreciated. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council, if you don't mind going to seven F golf course. It was the follow-up of Mr. Gibbons' presentation to council regarding the damages that he sustained because of a golf ball that hit his car and caused damage. As you can see, there are quite a variety of solutions offered by different golf courses. Some absolutely don't take no responsibility. Some have signage and also a sign on a golf course for people to make them aware that some balls could be loose. Some others have high fences. Some others work with the management of their golf club so that when people have damages, they go and report those damages. And the management of the golf course try to find out where that ball originated from. And then the golfer is then responsible for the damages. So there is a huge variety of solution. We need to find one for Mr. Gibbons that really represents. We need to find one for Mr. Gibbons that really represents what's happening here. The ball originated from the golf course, we know that. We know we didn't have a high fence. We know we had no signage. So in light of what you have presently, tell me how you would like to see this resolved? Is that a question of, at this point, sharing cost and then taking precautionary measure for the future? Or is it we disclaim our responsibility? Yours to tell me.
Is this the first time ever that we've had an incident at the golf course?
Jeff could tell us if there are statistics.
That's staggering to me.
I don't know the exact number, it's rare, but no, it's not the first time. We've had issues with the residents along Ninth, where there was, you know, who knows who it was, but intentionally firing off the driving range of houses or, you know, things like that, that has happened. Again, rare thankfully, but no, certainly not, not the only time. I think we've had one other vehicle as well.
And what was the solution?
Nothing changed. We didn't pay out anything, but we also didn't take any measures after either. And it was a while ago. I don't know, I just, I'm aware that something happened, but I don't know any of the details of that event. And it was a number of years ago.
But she's not good. If there is a history of president, we didn't do nothing, maybe not as smart.
Every golfer knows that they're responsible for their ball. That's, that's part of the culture, that's part of the knowledge of golfing as it exists. Yeah, I just.
But at this point, the issue that we have is that we don't have a policy written anywhere. And that's the issue. So in that case, we didn't do diligent after having had an incident previous to that. That doesn't fare well for us. So is it a case where we say, here's a certain sum of money, surely not the whole thing? And as a sign of goodwill, with a desire to improve situation, and how we're going to improve it?
Yeah, well, I think whatever, whatever we decide, it should be consistent with whether the damage was three hundred dollars or whether it was three million. So if you're, if somebody proposes that we pay half, you know, that would essentially be similar to saying we should pay half of a three million dollar, you know, lawsuit in this case. So, you know, I fear that because the dollar amounts are so trivial, really, that it would be easy to just say, oh, we're sorry, we should have had a couple of signs, here we go. But I just still don't see any negligence on our part, you know, as a town. Yeah, for me personally, I don't see negligence.
I appreciate your point of view, I really do. Counselor, please?
Well, reading through the report, I didn't really see any, you know, golf course, as the golf course taking responsibility was always the golfer is responsible for his ball and...
The management only tried to figure out who were the golfers.
I guess the duty would be for, one, I think, yeah, we could, you know, have a sign there stating, but you're saying, and I'm not a golfer, so I don't know, but if that's, you know, standard throughout, you know, the sport, we could, you know.
Have signs there. Golfers responsible.
And on many courses, you will see signs to that effect. I think the signs are there because of this.
But I think it would also be, you know, incumbent upon, you know, the person that had the damage to immediately go onto the golf course and say, who, who's golfing? Who fired that ball? And, you know, to make their claim to that.
Jeff, do we know if that happened?
No, I don't think it did.
Okay. All right, so it was just assumed that it was from this hole from, okay. All right, Counselor Barnes, what's your opinion?
How do you?
We need a policy, it has to be consistent.
We definitely need a policy. I, at this point in time, I can't see how you can make the town or the golf course responsible when there's a provincial highway driving by that area. Do you go back and say, well, you drive a provincial highway at your own risk? You have insurance on your vehicle, but I don't know that that covers that. I don't, but I still can't see the town being responsible.
Well, if it's glass broken, it still has a deductible or something.
Well, yeah, I don't know.
No, well, so you're not feeling too good for that. Counselor Banbury, what would you like to see done?
I don't think we can, I don't think we can do anything for it. I don't think we're liable for it. Like, I just can't see liability as an issue for us.
All right. Counselor Edmonds?
Well, in country, they have a lot of golf courses that the highway goes right through the center of them.
Yeah.
And you go through at your own risk. It says golf course, but, well, I got hit by one and it bust my side nerve. I didn't even, I just looked at it as an act of God. I was there at the wrong time.
Right there with lightning.
Place.
All right, so it gives me the feeling that there is no desire for compensation.
And the other problem is how do you prove whose ball it was? Because their balls don't have names on them, except for manufacturers.
Some do, mine does.
All right. So at this point, it appears that there is no desire to change that, but maybe a desire to have some sorts of policy to take away the responsibility of the town about, or to put signs?
Well, I don't know that we have responsibility. I can see some value of saying, you know, we need to put some signs there.
Yes.
I see no, no issue with doing that. But I think it's really incumbent upon us to, you know, like Pritchard Creek, they have a policy, they never pay for damage by golf.
No, this is a policy you need.
And I think that's the kind of, that kind of policy, I think we should put it up.
All right, okay. So there is a subject, a policy that takes away the responsibility of the town for damages.
Well, it makes clear that the town has no responsibility. It doesn't take away, makes it clear that we don't have it.
Right, okay, so a policy similar to Pritchard Creek golf course, regarding the golf course issues. Anybody else? Counselor Banbury?
Now, are we responsible to make sure that there's signage out on the golf course? That they are responsible for damage that they incur?
That is something.
Or is that something to do with Black Sands?
No, that is something, because we own the golf course, that we can maybe deal with that.
We may have to pay for the signs.
Yeah, I think so.
I think that's what you're getting at, isn't it?
Yeah, I think, I think so. Jeff, can you give us a little bit of a sense for how we're going about if we want signs on the golf course to let the golf population know?
I mean, I think signs are a good idea and we just get some made up and place them strategically, the ninth tee-off box, tenth tee-off box, tenth fairway, driving range, that covers most all of it.
All right.
When houses start going up down there, we may need to have a few more along number eleven fairway.
Is there something that we need to put on, well, nine is a provincial highway, so I don't really know. Can we put a sign with golf course?
Oh, I was thinking on the course for the golfers, sorry.
No, that's itself.
It should be, just designated as a golf course, you should be able to do that.
Personally, I'm not sure we need, you know, a sign for every troubled hole. I think we need something, hole one stating, you know, golf your own risk, type thing or down, you know. Maybe even just mention, might be some issues in ninth, tenth, and whatever, and then we've said it, we've said it, they know.
You do see it on golf courses particularly around properties and stuff, just please know golfers are responsible for damage. So if you play Coldale as an example, because it winds its way right around all the houses there, on the holes that tend to have a tendency to put balls in somebody's yard, there's a warning there to the golfers, just to remind them.
Right.
Okay, so should we have a motion to direct administration to see that signage be placed on strategic holes? Counselor Banbury?
Well, I was just going to encourage whoever makes that motion, and I'd have to make it myself, but maybe to have, yeah, so I would almost like to see those signs put up by our management group as their financial contribution that they owe back in improvements on the course. So if we just maybe set, we call up and say, hey, here's what we'd like to direct this year for the improvements. And then honestly, it keeps it a little bit arms-length anyway, so we can say, oh, the management group put those signs up and...
Okay, then before we pass a motion, then maybe we need to direct administration to contact management group regarding signage on their golf course and to...
I think it should be on the highway too.
Yeah.
And to allow such improvements to come out of what they owe us for.
Okay, do you want to?
So I would make that motion.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Oh, do you need the word? So, yeah, to, I would move to direct administration to contact Black Sands and maybe invite them to put up these signs that we discussed and let them know that such could be deducted from the improvement money that they owe each year.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. Good thinking, Counselor, you were like that idea. All right, let's go to seven G. Full schedule. Do you need to revisit this item or are you satisfied with the presentation of Doug and have you asked enough questions at that point?
I'm satisfied.
Okay, satisfied? All right, so let's leave it. Let's carry on. Huh, we don't have anybody there. Do you want to take a break at this point? Because at this point, we have nobody to take minutes.
No, we're going to be having a meal here shortly.
Right, so do you want to take a break at this point?
Yeah.
All right, you want to make a motion?
How long are we going to break for?
Five minutes.
Five minutes?
Yeah, five minutes until they come back.
I moved to take a break for five minutes.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. It's just we have nobody to report that.